I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and Mr. Latchmore, would you take the roll call attendance, please?
Trustee Pelkey, here. Trustee Menard.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Present.
Trustee Arnold.
Present.
Mayor LaBounty.
Here.
Nobody from the public has signed up to adjust the board, so we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is minutes of the July 15, 2024 regular meeting. Everybody should have a copy of that in their packet. If there's no questions or additions or deletions, then I need a motion to accept the minutes of July 15, 2024 regular meeting as printed.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the July 15, 2024 minutes as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, Mr. Treasurer?
There are no additions or deletions this evening.
Okay. Everybody should have a copy of the bills in their packet. If there's no questions, then I need a motion to accept the bills as printed.
I have one question, please.
Okay.
On the comprehensive plan from Barton LeJudas for $2,800, is that, that's up until June? Have we, does the zoning board have the comprehensive plan?
No. So, this is the research that they're doing to come up with the plan and present it to the, it's going to be presented to the board through a board here?
Correct. I didn't know we had something in hand.
We have nothing at this point because it's still in the preliminary stages as far as coming with the final project. So, right now, we have spent about forty-two thousand of our eighty thousand dollar grant money.
What are the comprehensive plans?
Correct. So, we're about fifty percent through. And Mr. Favrell's part of the committee, both Favrells are part of the committee, so they can validate the meetings that we've had and public sessions.
I'm just curious of where we were on...
We're about halfway through the process. Yes. Would you agree to that?
That's correct. Yeah.
I make a motion, we pay the bills as printed? Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the bills will be paid. Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I do have a couple things for correspondence. First, I've been approached by a resident that is interested in painting a fire hydrant out in front of the residents. They said this is something that residents were allowed to do in the past, and she wanted to get the consent of the board so that she could do the same now. So, what I indicated to her is, what I felt the board would approve it, is that the painting would have to be approved by the board and get consent, so that way it's not allowing just everybody to go out and just paint a fire hydrant at their own will. So, it'd have to be an approval of the board with what the fire hydrant's going to look like. But it's a board decision.
One thing, the top, the top part of the fire hydrant is painted a different color, or the pressure or the amount of gallons, like a green, there's a yellow, and I think what else is there, Brian?
Red, orange, and green.
So, it's just going to be the color?
Just the color?
Yes.
So, they're not going to disturb, like, there's concerns about there's numbers on them, and there's color codes that tells us the flows of what those hydrants are.
Correct.
So, those have to stay whatever color they are, and the number has to be visible to look.
Yeah. So, does she just want to paint it the same color, the same, she just wants to...
She, she wants to put a design on it. It's a resident that lives in the close proximity of the school, and she has a nice pattern where it's going to be different colors. It looked really nice for what she wanted to do, but I didn't know as far as the village wanted to have a policy that hydrants are going to stay red like a normal hydrant, or they wanted to approve, because I guess at one point, the village did allow residents to paint hydrants?
They had a program one time. My sister was in charge of it, and they painted them like Snoopy, and they painted them different things on them and stuff like that and everything. That was about thirty years ago.
Okay.
Like a Dalmatian collar, or different things, feel different, animal characters?
Yeah, Mickey Mouse on some, and...
Well, I don't see a problem with it, as long as the two things that you gentlemen highlighted, the number code on it and the color coordination for the amount of gallons at that certain hydrant or pump, and I think that's, we should take each one of those things on a case-by-case basis, so the administrator can talk to whoever is putting this forth to make sure he can tell them that you can paint this if we approve it, but you can't touch the top or the number on this fire hydrant, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right. And the designs need to be approved by the board before they...
Yeah, I would say so.
A lot of people don't understand of the color coding that we do have. There is a code that are on these hydrants that tells us as firefighters and pump operators of the flows per hydrant of where they are.
Okay.
So, a lot of people don't understand that. But that's the very top. Like I said, the number is essential too, because, you know, for our records.
Correct.
Okay. So, do we need to take a vote for her to approve this, do this one, or...
I would make a resolution, or a motion to approve it.
I make a motion, we approve the painting of the fire hydrant that the woman gets in contact with you, and of course she paints it.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of allowing this hydrant to be painted, and all future fire hydrants to be moved through the board and to be painted, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. You can contact the young lady and let her know that she's been approved with those two things that she has to be aware of, and we're good to go.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
Yes, I have a couple more items. The next thing is I received an email from Matthew Parrott, and he is the president of the Hoppy Association here, to Ross's Point, and what they have asked is if they could relocate the snack bar from its current location over to the warming room. But he indicated that by moving the snack shop, the snack bar to the location, it would cause less congestion in the area where it's at right now. So, as the board knows, in that warming room, we have taken down that petition that separated the office area from the warming room. That petition is down, and the reason we took it down is because we're going to be doing some remodeling with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant money that we received from Billy Jones. And just to give you an update, I just received by email today that that grant has been approved and authorized, and we'll be getting the funding. So, we just have to show that the money that we spent, and they'll reimburse us. So, we just got that email today. So, we'll be getting reimbursed for the roof, the chillers, we put in, to put in all new windows, doors, remodel the boardroom, new flooring throughout, and new security camera, and brand-new internet through the whole building. So, that's all part of that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant.
And for those people at home who maybe have missed the meeting, I, myself and the administrator met with the Mr. Jones, and he came through our facility, and the theme was that this rec center and the surrounding fields are the heart of our village. It's basically the calling card to draw families into our village. I was hoping to get somewhere in the neighborhood of hundred thousand dollars or more to fix up this facility. Mr. Jones, after listening to the administrator, myself, made a stunning statement to myself and the administrator that he was willing to go up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant because he was impressed with the facility and our little village. So, or as the administrator stated, we're going to have stated of our security and internet along with other changes to this building, which will make it more family-oriented and a secure and safer building for everybody in it. So, thank you, Mr. Latchmore. Anything else?
So, what the, yeah, so what there's, if the board were to allow this to happen, this would be the time before we do the installation of the new flooring, because as you can recall, Mr. Mayor, we are going to be putting new flooring in that area, and we're going to extend it out, and we're going to do this area as well.
Does anybody see any problems with moving the rec center or the food service court?
No. I would make a couple stipulations, if you don't find me throwing in my two cents. So, I think to move the snack bar from its current location to the warming room, I believe that should be at their expense and not the expense of the village. And by moving the snack bar to that warming room, we're going to be losing some warming room space. So, my suggestion is, last year I talked to Heath, and what we did is, the warming room upstairs, it also connects to a room that the youth hoppy built that was, they used it as like a meeting room. I think what they have to do is make that available space for additional warming space for individuals that come to the rink. Since we're going to be losing that designated area, we should compensate with that space upstairs as well.
My opinion is, the warming room downstairs, down here, they should keep a certain area in front of those windows for handicapped people to be able to come in and probably watch what they want, because they can't go up the stairs.
Right. I, I think they'll probably keep...
Are they going to utilize the whole thing?
I, I would say it would probably end up getting utilized for a whole snack area. I mean, what they could do, I would, because Arsène and I were discussing it, he said, well, what are they going to do with the area that, where the snack bar is located now? I suppose they could put some tables there so people can buy food and then come and sit in that area, and it won't keep it as congested. But there is a lot of congestion during the high school games and even during tournaments because people at the snack bar, parents coming in and out of the rink, so it is congested. I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think there should be some type of stipulations to work with them. I'm not sure if there's any drain that can do the, for the sink and the water supply. We could probably do the water, bring it down, but I don't know about the, the waste.
There was a sink in there at one time.
Oh, there was?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that...
The only reservation I have with this is, do they have any drawings or plans of how the design of this?
Yeah, like the drawing.
Me too.
Of how they're going to utilize that space.
The floor space and the layout of the floor space.
Yeah. So, I, I'll talk to Matt, but that's, that's a good, good idea. Let's see what it is and make sure that it works.
And maybe they could put some tables up by those windows so people, if they, you know, if we still had some handicapped people that wanted to watch the game, they could sit at those tables.
They may have to be high-top tables?
Yeah.
I, I think before we commit ourselves, I think we should see the, the floor plans.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. That, that sounds right.
Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
Yes, I'm sorry. The next thing that I want to ask the board is, currently, the village of Ross's Point goes through general code, and this is a company that we use to keep our codebook for the municipal laws up to date, and they provide us hard copy, and they also do digital copy. So, doing some investigations, this has not been updated since 2015. So, our codebook, our hard codebook and our digital codebook that we have online is not current and up to date, so none of the local laws that have been passed since 2015 to current are not listed or published. So, I reached out to them, they provided us with a quote, and the quote would be, to get us back up to date with everything, it would be sixteen thousand dollars. And the payment schedule would be that... So, at the time of the signing of the contract, we'd have to provide them twenty percent down. Within a hundred and eighty days, we would have to provide them with forty percent, and with the submission of the draft, it would be another thirty percent, and then the, the balance due upon delivery. But this is something that we need to keep up to date.
So, this will fall into the next budget cycle?
Well, part of it would come underneath our current budget cycle, and I talked to Arsène. What we would have to do is unfortunately do a budget modification. What I did is I budgeted to have some of our, our old board minutes restored. So, what we would, not that that's not important, because they do need to be restored, but I think right now, this is probably a little bit more important to get up to date. So, the money that I had budgeted to do that restoration of our board minutes, to preserve those, would go towards the cost to get this done. And we...
I think that's a good action.
The money's there right from our conversation.
We haven't done it in nine years.
It's something that has to be done.
Do it now or do it later. Yeah, we're publishing something.
The president is on the way.
The morning is going to go on.
Yep, exactly.
So, I would just need the board's approval to, to move forward, and I can have the mayor sign the contract and get it, get the ball rolling.
I make a motion that we go forward with upgrading our code and have the mayor sign the agreement.
I'll second that motion. All those, I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it. So, we go forward with updating our general code.
And I only have one other thing, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to update the board as far as for our new water plant. So, as the board knows and as the residents know, the village of Ross's Point, based upon the hard work by the current board and your persistency as far as completing applications, we finally got it approved, and from New York State, we received five million dollar grant, and through the federal government, we received a two million dollar grant through, through the federal government. So, this has been in the works for quite some time. The money is awarded to the village of Ross's Point. We have not received any funding, because at this point in time, the engineering company that the board hired, Barton LeJudas, has sent the prints to the Clinton County Health Department for approval. There's a few things that they need to make adjustments on, and it should be approved after the adjustments. I spoke to Jason Ballard from Barton LeJudas, and I requested Jason to provide us with a current update as far as where the plant is, and some dates as far as what our projected dates are to start breaking ground. Because the board member, members can recall, our goal was to break ground in October. That would allow our public works people to do some of the groundwork up there to help reduce the cost, so that we can use the grant money for more of the contractors. So, we're going to get a timeline from Jason, and we should have that timeline for the August nineteenth board meeting. That's what was requested to Jason, and I requested that, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week. So, that, that's just an update. That's all that I, I have at this point, and once again, we are still working as far as getting approval for improvements for our wastewater system as well, and we're, our focus, if the board can recall, is State Street. That seemed to have been the worst area during our smoke test, and once again, that's grant money that has been secured and granted, just waiting for the engineer prints to be approved by the Health Department.
Just for clarification, all this, all these grants were secured under this present board, correct?
Yes, because with the prior board, it was denied, but this board decided that it wanted to continue to proceed to move forward. It was your persistency that allowed us to get the grant money. If you can recall, I had to go around the businesses for the grant, for the federal government, and the local businesses supported this as well. So, thank you to, to our local businesses for giving us those letters of support. So, yes.
Okay. So, if anybody wants to play hero on Facebook for taking credit they didn't deserve, then we just cleared it up tonight, because this was done under this board, no prior board.
I never got any denial.
But, but anyway, and if you speak out of turn, you'll be asked to leave.
You're lying. I never got any denial. You called me out.
If you speak out of turn, you'll be asked to leave.
Call the sheriff then. I'm going to defend myself.
Just grow up a little bit.
Stop lying about me.
Just grow up. Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Undermine, I, I'm sorry to accept the resignation of Patricia Burkett from the Zoning Board of Appeals. She was the chairman for ten years. She did a fine job. She has been involved in many things in this village, from the libraries to the fire department to the zoning board. So, at the end of the day, it's with deep regret, we accept her resignation, but in, in her place, I'm going to appoint Brent Favrell, who's been a member of the board for, I don't know, a year now or so, Mr. Favrell?
Just about a year.
As far as, on the sidelines, so we're going to put you as a full member now. We need to have somebody like yourself, your age, you're going to make a fine addition to the board. So, I need everybody to welcome from this board, Mr. Favrell on board. I know he'll do a good job.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to accept Pat Burkett's resignation.
Okay, that was my next move. I need a motion to accept Pat Burkett's, as the administrator said, resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I make a motion, we accept Pat Burkett's resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation of Pat Burkett from the Zoning Board of Appeals, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Resignation been accepted, and I have appointed Mr. Brent Favrell in her place. The next item on my list is hire, we are in the process, and it's been approved, to have a line supervisor for our electrical department, long overdue. That would be Mr. Scott Decker, who's very qualified. Mr. Decker's agreed to accept this position in civil service, has been sent his application, and has accepted his qualifications. Mr. Decker will be paid fifty dollars an hour for up to twenty hours a week, and he will be in charge of supervising the electrical department. I need a motion from this board to accept the hiring of Scott Decker as a higher line supervisor for the village of Ross's Point. If I, if there's no discussion, then I need a motion.
I make the motion, we hire Scott Decker?
Second.
Mr. Latchmore, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it. Welcome aboard, Mr. Decker. Just along that line, Mr. Decker's qualification may allow us to do electrical inspections instead of a private company doing inspections for any work done within the boundaries of our village. We will discuss in the future with this board, a set of fees, if the board is interested in doing that, allowing Mr. Decker as a source to check these electrical works, and it'll be directly going into our coffers versus a private individual or a private firm. So, I think it's a win-win situation for this village. That'll be something we'll speak up going forward. That's, that's all I have. Trustee Arnold, do you have anything?
Yes. I'd like to thank Keith Carden and his crew for doing the painting of the lines for the parking at the library. They did a nice job over there, very nice. And also, up on Upper Lake Street where the, they had the trouble with the transformer, I see there's a street light on the guy's property, and I wonder if you could move that so the guy could take and move his, mow his lawn and stuff around it, so.
So, that was taken down while they were cutting the tree?
Yeah.
And we thought they were going to come back and remove the other trees sooner, so I could see about getting it placed elsewhere.
Yeah. Depending if we put it at the little building or someplace, you know, so the guy don't have to trim around it all the time and stuff like that. I think it'd be nice for the village to move it, you know?
Yeah, we can, we can see about having it moved.
Okay. And also, is there any way possible we can get the state to take and trim along the curbing?
I had conversations with them, and the mayor was present, with the trees, and you're talking about these storm drains that are all overgrown and everything.
Yeah, the grass, some places exist high.
They, they, I told them that they need to come and maintain those, and they said that they should have never been put in, and they're not going to waste any of their time to, to take care of them. And they were poorly engineered.
They basically said it was a poor engineered design, that administrator and I were told, and they weren't going to waste any time or money to keep these things cleaned, which I argued, since they were put in, they should be kept clean, and they, that was, that was a resounding no.
I remember Mr. Clark said something to the supervisor at the time.
We, we had a supervisor there, there was two of them. So, it was Joe and Mark. So, Joe is ahead of Mark, and they were both there, and they both downright said, no. He said that they looked pretty when they first put them in, but he said, this is what happens. They should never be designed for North Country, but they were, and he said that they just don't have the manpower, the time to do it.
Hmm. I know, the streets look terrible when you run up the street, I'll tell you. It looks bad for, for the village.
I mean, the only thing I would ask is, you know, residents, I'll have weak lackers, I mean, they could probably go out and try to trim it and make it look more presentable, but we just don't have the time or manpower to do it either.
And trust me, we, we were around and around the mobile bushwood, and they said, no, no, no.
Yeah, well, it was just the deshton, so. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Menard?
Just one thing, I'd just like to thank Pat Burkett for her ten years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Pelkey?
An update on the boat launch. I asked last meeting about if we could do some signage, the lines painted, so the cars can park where the cars park, and the trucks with the trailers, and the cars with the trailers will park where they do, in the longer spaces. And the rec center crew went down there and painted the lines, like Trustee Arnold said, and it did make a difference. I can see a difference where the cars are supposed to park, where the cars are supposed to. And they're leaving the long parking areas for the trailers and with the, with the trucks or with the cars.
Yep.
So, that worked out very well.
Yeah, it looks a lot better.
Yeah, it does. I mean, when you pull in there, you can, you can tell where you need to park.
Yeah.
And what you have. The second thing I have is, we're going to have a power outage. The village of Ross's Point will be having a power outage on circumlocations of the village. The power outage will be held on Saturday, August tenth, 2024, from six AM until approximately ten AM. The purpose of this outage is to upgrade equipment in our substation. The following, the following locations affected by the surge are...
Bless you, bless you.
Alfred Carrier Apartments, those are the ones that are supplied by the village, it's all one-story buildings. Priscilla Lane, Champlain Street, from Angelo's West, so it wouldn't be Halla Champlain Street, but it would be from like Phillips Avenue to, to Academy Street. So, Phillips Avenue will be affected, Trainon Drive, Stewart Street, Rock Street, Ryan Street, Meyer Street, and 260 Lake Street. In the event of inclement weather, the rain date is scheduled for the following, August eleventh, or it could be the seventeenth or the eighteenth, if this weekend is a total washout. So, like I said, it would So like I said, it would be, uh, from six AM to ten. We're leaving a little, uh, leeway so in case something didn't go right or it takes us a little more time to change out this equipment, but hopefully, we should have it on a lot sooner. Any questions? From any minute from the board?
This isn't necessary to do, broken insulator, my understanding is, correct?
Yes, we have a, a broken insulator currently in our substation that feeds just the south end of the village, and, uh, we wanna do some adjustments on some other equipment to make sure that everything works properly so we don't have problems in our future. That's all.
Makes sense.
Uh, the other thing I have is, um.
Have you got the insulator all set and everything like that?
Yes, yes, we got everything up there, we have spare switches, we got spare insulators, it's just.
Oh, okay.
No, everything is ready, everything will be ready to go.
Yeah, perfect.
Uh, like I said, it's, to take the outage, to do it the safest way possible and.
Yep.
Well, expedite it the best we can. It shouldn't take more than a couple hours, but we always leave a little more leeway.
Yep.
Just in case.
Yeah, we're not.
Um, the other thing I have is, uh, with the heat waves that we've been having, if you notice that the downtown flowers look really nice, the water plant's been doing a good job watering those flowers, and we have a lot of comments of how beautiful this village looks. And it's not just the downtown flowers, it's the ones at the fire station, and the ladies that take care of all our flower gardens. Our flower beds look so nice at the library, the village office, uh, down here at the Veterans Park. Uh, I see the ladies out early watering those flowers, and I tell you, if you see them, just down there.
Oh, yeah.
And they do a nice job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
They did enough credit.
Yeah, I just wanna give a little credit out there for what they do because if they didn't do it, our, our village wouldn't look as beautiful as it does.
Yeah, very true.
The other thing that the public works is working on, if you notice, on Montgomery Street, they've been starting to do the sidewalks. Um, they're supposed to do, uh, a section of sidewalks, that's from the Health Department grant, so that's what they've been working on, they're ma- making them five foot wide so the handicap, uh, accessible, and, uh, they're supposed to go as far as the Delittars fence, is that correct?
Yes, we're, we're probably gonna extend on with money hadn't budgeted.
Right, with our own money, but the Health Department grant that they gave us will do as far as from the corner of Lake Street down to the Delittars fence. So it's a win-win for us.
Which is, which is a good shot in the arm for us.
Yes, yes, as part of that grant that, with the solar lights they, they, they gave us and.
Yep.
Whatever.
Perfect.
Yep.
So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Southwick?
So as, uh, Trustee Pelkey mentioned, we've been having a heat wave. Uh, the days that we don't have heat, we have intense rain. And I wanna thank the sewer department, or wastewater department, for the work they do to keep that functioning when we have a lot of rain. So, that's all I have. Uh, no, actually I do, one more other thing. I wanted to thank the, uh, village crews responsible for rescuing, I believe it was two cats.
Two cats.
Trees in the past month or so. We're here for all of our residents, even the ones with four legs.
Thank you.
There you go.
Now I'm better.
Thank you, Trustee Southwick. Uh, the code offers are here today, we don't have a request for an executive session at this point, and I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no, thank you, gentlemen.